Councilwoman will come to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance to the fire.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Call the roll.
Mr. Sextro?
Here.
Ms. McDaniel. Oh, she's absent, sorry. Mr. Putoff?
Here.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here. Okay, there being quorum, we will begin. We have some people who have signed in that they want to speak this evening. You get three minutes. At the end of 30 minutes, though, if you're still speaking, we're going to cut it off and go to our agenda. So first one on the agenda that wants to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Please.
Thank you. Can you just state your name, please?
Yes. My name is Lily Shockley. I am a 32-year resident of Evendale, and I'm here today to make comments regarding the November, the February 7th event. In my opinion, the Evendale Village Council delayed response to the Nazi demonstration on February 7th, 2025, represents a concerning failure of moral leadership. In moments of hateful public displays, prompt and unequivocal condemnation from local government is essential to reassure vulnerable community members and affirm shared values of dignity and respect. By hesitating to denounce such demonstration, council members inadvertently created space for harmful ideologies to gain perceived legitimacy while leaving residents questioning whether their local government truly stands for their protection and inclusion. Swift denunciation of Nazi demonstrations is not merely symbolic. It serves practical governance purposes by clarifying community standards, preventing the normalization of extremism, and fulfilling elected officials' responsibility to foster safe, inclusive environments. When local leaders delay taking precise positions against hate groups, they risk appearing indifferent to genuine community fears and historical trauma. The council's hesitation missed a critical opportunity to demonstrate moral courage and reinforce that in Evendale ideologies rooted in prosecution and violence receives no passes regardless of freedom of speech protections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Then proceed with our agenda and the consent agenda.
Mayor, hold on just for a second. Does anybody else? I'm seeing some. Come on up.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Loretta Davis. I've lived here for 25 years. I'm 89 years old, and I've seen so much of what's happening now. I've lived through it, and I was appalled that there was no quick action when we had the Nazis that were in our area, in our neighborhood. I don't know what it is you plan to do. I don't know what the plan is. I don't know what's being done in terms of the police. I'd like to know those things, and I'd like to know that there is protection. About a year ago, I was in the grocery store, and some man came to me and said, "Nigger, get out of the way." Fortunately, my grandson was not with me because he might have done something, said something, and he could have been hurt. So what we live under an umbrella of is that you never know when your kids leave the house what's going to happen. And that Nazi sign is in my brain and will be there forever. I'd like to think that the people of Evendale will stand up and do something and say something about what went on. Thank you. Loretta Davis.
My name is Jim Anderson. I've been 35, 40-year resident of Evendale, and I concur with these ladies have said in regards to the swift action. I was thoroughly disappointed, thoroughly disappointed, that no one initially spoke up from the city of, from the community of Evendale. That was really disturbing to me. In fact, I don't usually post things. I don't usually say things, but I posted that on that neighborhood chat. Where are the executive group of Evendale? What do they have to say? We did something later, but we got to do it now. This is today. It's not yesterday. See, I hope that everyone in this hall here was interested. This gentleman over here, he's sleeping. Is he a representative of what's going on in Evendale? He's sleeping? You know, so let me just leave it at that, and thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Carolyn will have part of a statement as she reads her discussion of the minutes or of her report of the Police and Fire Department. Okay, the minutes of the previous meeting have been distributed. Is there any corrections, changes? No. The call the roll.
Motion to accept.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Okay, the next is committee reports. Mr. Burke will present the finance report.
Okay, thank you, everybody. February receipts were 18% lower than February of 2024 receipts. Year-to-date tax receipts were 3.6% lower than this time last year. Village as a whole, village receipts exceeded expenditures by $109,400. Year-to-date expenditures exceeded receipts by, as expected, by $366,000. Also, we had a, an audit from the auditors, and it was a clean audit, and kudos to the finance team of Kathy, Teresa, tax team of Cindy, and IT, Brandon, for all the hard work they did during this time, and kudos again for Cynthia Karachi, the chief fiscal and county officer, for another clean bill of health.
This audit was by the state of Ohio.
By the state of Ohio, yes, which is a yearly thing. Okay, on to Gorman Heritage Farm. Summer camp is almost sold out, few registrations left for some older kids programs. Camp runs from June 2nd through August 6th. Our after-care program hours will run from 2:30 to 5:30. School field trip started in March 11th, and fall signups began on March 3rd. Farm-to-community is growing. GHF education staff is creating a new opportunity to reach our community. Classes, seed-starting workshop, bee maze, and agroability in the gardens, and introduce to sustainable home food production. Fundraising, May Farm Fest is coming Saturday, May 10th. It will be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Many unique opportunities to engage with the farm. Spring appeal will be in the mail in mid-April. This is one of two requests for operational support we make each year. Visitors experience new signage for the farm has arrived and will be installed weather permitting. Walkway paths are undergoing improvements and assistance from grant, grants from a local corporation and their volunteer team. A website redesign is forthcoming. Staffing, hiring a development manager, and they're creating the job description as we speak. Project updates, Gorman Creek and Wetland Restoration Project is advancing from 30% to 60% completion and drawings. Construction is scheduled to start April and is expected to finish within three to four weeks, weather permitting. Farm production, our garden team is actively planting seeds and regulating temperatures within the greenhouse. Meat production is scaling up with orders from broiled chicks, feeder pigs, beef, and turkeys. Then on to recreation. We are awaiting final contracts for summer concert series to finish out our schedule. Advertising will start soon. Sign up for Agastan Stravaganza by April 1st if you're interested. You can also have grandchildren, but I mean, it's a little bit more, but avoid the price increase after April 1st. Phi Lambda Pi, February activities, dodgeball, bonko, and sealing tile and paint and spoons. Sports, youth, and adult basketball are both currently wrapping up, and tournaments will, and end-of-season parties will be happening. And then children's program, 57 attended our monthly PJ party. 24 kids joined the cross-gate lanes, annual President's Day bumper bowling. 17 families attended our family heartfelt huddle for Valentine's Day, and then 20 kids attended the Valentine's lunch brunch. And adults, 66, attended the February meet and greet on Valentine's Day theme, and bimonthly card-making, chair volleyball, Monday night card-playing, book club, red hats, and Romeos also took place. And there will be no orders, and then the only other report is for service.
Question. A couple of things you mentioned, you mentioned that people need to sign up. Where do they sign up at?
I believe they can sign up online.
At the rec center.
Where?
Online with their new software or at the rec center?
Yep.
Well, the first one we talked about was the Gorman Farm. You sign up at the rec center as well?
I'm not sure Gorman Farm is on our website.
No. The Gorman Farm stuff is on their website.
It's on Gorman Farms' website.
Yeah, it's not on the Evendale.
Right.
Okay. And service department. Special activities, Traffic Island Landscape Maintenance, Jeffrey Allen has begun work prepping the islands, equipment maintenance, vehicle maintenance. Crews are working on the mowers and tractors for the upcoming season. Equipment, work truck, we have received the work truck and have put the vehicles in service. Bucket truck, we have received a quote for this vehicle. It is currently in production and expect to receive the vehicle in the next couple of months. Dump truck, we are finalizing quotes for this truck, and will expect, expected delivery once we have the order placed. Miscellaneous projects, crews have been addressing severe, several miscellaneous projects throughout the village, and this will include catch basin repairs, dead tree trimming, green belt maintenance, chipping, special pickups are, have been delayed, had been delayed, but now are back in action due to the snow removal. And snow and ice February had three significant snowstorms. This season has been very active. To date, the department has used a total of 907 tons of salt and over 475 hours of overtime for snow removal. Gorman Farm dry sprinkler system received and installed a new compressor for the interative building to repair the dry sprinkler system that went off because of frozen line. Personnel, we have an ordinance for hiring, and that will be today, and then the fire department generator will be installed, will be, contractor will be out Friday to schedule the outage and the replacement of the generator and tree removals. Crews, if you've seen, driven up and down the roads, you've seen trees marked for removal, and that will be done weather permitting. And the 75th anniversary project, architects are continuing vetting the designs on concept B and discussed, as discussed last month, we anticipate this design in the next couple of weeks, and we'll share that. Service department, material storage spends are, the concrete was poured on half of it last week, and the remaining part will be poured sometime this week. Also, don't forget recycling day is mark your calendars for May 10th from 9:00 to noon, and it is including tires again. And then building appraisal, IRR is finalized, and appraisal for the buildings, valves for various buildings in the complex for our liability insurance. So we're getting new appraisals. And then fire department transformer is scheduled, and salt bin replacement, so we're getting quotes for the replacement of the shingles on the salt dome. And service building is almost enclosed, the new service building, and there is a groundbreaking today for the elevator and the work to be done at the cultural arts building. I think that concludes.
Okay. Any questions, amendments? Okay, we'll go to councilperson.
Okay. I'm going to speak primarily to the residents about the response to the February 7th incident. I spoke at last council meeting to everyone who attended about the fact that it was not an activity that we had all supported and that we needed to be united with Lincoln Heights in denouncing that activity and finding ways to have a unified response and prevent such types of events happening, you know, to us in the future. So I want to share with you what we've been doing since then. I spoke at the time because I am the, I chair the council committee that has oversight responsibilities for police, fire, cultural arts, building zoning, and planning, so it fell within my purview. Also, we have established a small working group of council that's been working on the response, and I'm also on that particular team. So what we have been doing alongside Lincoln Heights, we're trying to define what happens next. Part of that is we have to listen, learn from what we did or did not do, and act accordingly, and we need to make sure that we build bridges and make it clear that this type of hate will not be accepted. That has to be at the front of everything we do. So I took notes of all the speakers that I think it was two hours plus that we had people speaking, and the comments kind of fell into several distinct categories. So I'm going to report on the, one of the primary things was providing itself a safe and healthy community, specifically in reference to our children. So we've been, the small working group has been working with elected officials and business leaders and members across the region, really. I mean, I spent time yesterday on the phone, actually, with the Urban League. At the end of this month, what we're planning is the elected leaders from Evendale and Lincoln Heights, along with Princeton School Board, and in conjunction with the rest of the communities that make up the Princeton School District, are going to come together to address child safety, trauma, and other concerns, and reinforce the fact that we have shared values, that we are all neighbors, our childrens all go to the same schools. We need to make sure that, you know, all of our processes and procedures in regards to children's safety are in line. We separately met with Princeton School Board as part of the process since February 7th, and this is part of what our, what we've decided coming out of that. At the same time, we're trying to set up some public forums in which we can discuss and get feedback and develop other action plans that we may need to take because elected leaders don't have all the answers. So we need input and other people can work with us and provide, you know, those issues. So that's one area. Another area has to do with the actual response from a law enforcement perspective to February 7th. And I'd said at the time that we were going to review, we were going to conduct a review, you know, of Evendale Police actions, since that's our responsibility. During the meeting, one of the Lincoln Heights residents spoke to the fact that an internal review, her comments were along the lines, she didn't know if she trusts, and I understood that, and we understood that. And so we're going to have a third-party investigation, but what everybody should know is that there are four investigations going on. We have first our internal Evendale Police Department Critical Response Review, and it's ongoing at, you know, at this point. The Hamilton County Sheriff's Office is also conducting an internal investigation in regards to their response because they have the law enforcement responsibilities for Lincoln Also, both our police department and Hamilton County Sheriff's Department formally requested that the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office look at this in terms of a criminal investigation, and in support of that, we have released all of our body camera footage, and it's now in the hands of the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office to determine whether there will be any criminal charges filed. So that's the third investigation going on. In light of the concerns about transparency and accountability, we have hired 21st Century Policing Solutions, which you will probably forever here refer to as 21 CP. They're a very well-respected, nationally-renowned agency with diverse teams that respond, and they started their review last week. And to this point, we've given them more than 70 hours of our body camera footage, shared numerous policies, reports, and training records of our police officers. And it's my understanding that they will be contacting Lincoln Heights to go through and ensure what their involvement will be and set up arrangements for that. As part of this investigation, there were numerous agencies that responded to the February 7th event, and we sent letters to all of them asking to participate in that, and to my knowledge, they all responded affirmatively that they would participate in this review. So the end result, when we come out of this, we will publish the results of all of the reviews and follow the recommendations that will be made. So that was the second area where there was a lot of emphasis and concerns about that. The other area I'm going to just roughly call understanding and collaboration. It's clear that as a community, we need improvement in communication between Evendale and Lincoln Heights, not that we don't need better communication among other communities, but we have to really work on Evendale and Lincoln Heights specifically around the transparency and accountability. And we need to continue to seek some ways where we can reassure both communities that we will collaborate and unite our communities. We cannot, cannot, cannot let a hate group come in here and divide us. We have to come together and figure out and work together and set up a framework where we continue to work together in the future. So we are continuing to have those discussions and meetings as need be, and we are really committed to having a committed coalition of communities because we can't allow any of the communities surrounding us to be, to be targeted or to feel like that they are a target because we aren't all collaborating together to, you know, to unify against these types of activities. So that's a series of steps, and that's what's occurred since then. Most of this information is on our website at evendaleohio.org. If you haven't looked there, I would encourage you to do that. It also contains, there are a lot of rumors about things that have happened, and it addresses the rumors and clarifies that frequently asked questions are out there as well as the answers. We also went to the Hamilton County Commissioners Meeting and reported on Evendale's actions there. So we were asked questions beforehand to submit to the commissioners. Those responses are out there, so all that type of information is out there. So that's what we have done thus far in response to February 7th.
Can I ask a question to Jim Anderson? I forgot to say where he is. 3419 Sherwood Drive. My first question is, you know, we're concerned with citizens here who live in Evendale. We're concerned with our safety and our family's safety. We care about others, but we, the reason we're here is because of us. We live in this neighborhood, and you represent us. The one question I have, these people came in there with long rifles, long guns, and did we ask them for any identification? Did we obtain any identification from these individuals? I know they have a right to carry a gun, but how do we know that they're not convicted felons? It may be if they were people of a different color, they would have been asked, can I see your identification? I have not heard anyone ask or answer that question.
Can I take a shot at it?
Yes, please.
By the way, I'm Chris Patterson. I lead the working group that council is doing. Before I get to that, just one thing. I really appreciate your comment. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your time. That was the best thing I've heard in three weeks, your commentary when you first got up and wrote. It was unbelievably good. I wish you'd pass it out. To your point, this is the bone of contention about the whole issue, about what was allowed, why the police didn't do or didn't do this. Both law enforcement agencies, Evendale Police, Hamilton County Sheriff, both got there and assessed that no laws were being broken. In the United States, if you're not breaking law, it limits what the police can ask for. Now, by the way, when I say this, I understand completely that that does not match with your cultural experience. I understand, I understand, like you wouldn't believe, that all of you are sitting here looking at me going, "He doesn't get it." Please, believe me, if I could fix this cross-current, I would. But when the police arrived, no laws were being broken, and so then they shifted gears to say, "We're here to protect life, and we're here to separate people." I've said this on multiple, multiple occasions. We are, we have no idea how bad this could have gotten. If somebody had twitched, if somebody had taken the wrong offense to something, something that was being waved, something that was being said, there were lots of guns that go bang, and when they go bang, really bad stuff happens. And so what, to the point that you made, people made the decision that they were going to keep people separate, and that was, that was the one thing that was driving them. And so they did not, to your point, get the information that you were asking for. Does that make sense? Yes and no. And part of our independent review is to bring people in who assess policies, who assess procedures, who look at actions and say, "Did we do this well?" Not, "Did we do this well?" and say, did we do this well? Not, did we do it legally? Did we do it well, and what do we need to change? And what does that look like? And it is really, really important, number one, that you guys go away understanding our commitment to following that process, that we will, we are very much interested in what people have to say. We're also very much interested in how do we do this in a way that this doesn't ever happen again? On 18 different ways, this was wrong, and I cannot begin to tell you how bad this was. It was horrible. It was heinous. It was hateful. And what's worse is, in trying to do the right thing, we do, in trying to do the right thing and say, you know, we're going to be precise, and we're going to follow procedure, and we're going to make sure all the data's in, we didn't come forward and model empathy. We didn't say, this is horrible. We don't, you know, we didn't say, wow, we know what, we can't imagine what it would be like, but we got your back. And so, we want to continue to say that as loudly and as often as we can. And by the way, thanks for coming up and giving us a chance to say it. But there are a number of questions like yours that even if you're prone to believe me, you shouldn't. Let the investigation play out. We've got four of them running now. Let them all play out. We will, we will walk you through everything, and we will show you, this is what happened. These are the choices people made. This is why they did it. Was it legal? Yes or no? Was it good or bad? All the rest of that. And I, I hope at the end of this, you will have both renewed confidence in us, renewed confidence in the Police Department, and we will have the ability to create something that's safer and better going into the future. Did that, did that answer your question?
You, you give me some food for thought.
Okay. By the way, if anybody needs more food for thought and more discussion, call me.
I just want a very quick comment. Okay. Look at it. When you do all these investigations, you go find out what could be done in the matter of the state. I think the main thing that we need to focus on is that nobody got hurt. And we talk about assault weapons, you know, Nazis masks and all that stuff, high tempers, and nobody got hurt. That's the number one thing that we need to focus on is safety. Now, those other things, obviously, we got to keep looking at, see what we can do better. But the first thing they did was de-escalate the situation and making so that it didn't get worse. And I think we need to make sure we focus on that over those things. We didn't know this. We didn't know that and all that. Keep in mind, we start talking about somebody getting together like that. Their intent is never to negotiate with you. You have to de-escalate, decrease all the conflict and all the, all the other stuff, and you don't give them any incentive to get worse. And that's what our police officers did, and we need to commit them for that. And I'm not saying that they, that all police officers are good, because I got family members that are police officers, and there's a lot of that great wonderful work, and I also know some of their back books. But with all said and done, based on everything I knew about what happened, they did an excellent job, and we need to commit them for that. Now, as far as the town response with Evendale, I think that we take a major hit for not getting out in front of this and saying where we stood early in the process versus letting a lot of time go back and try to paint ketchup. And that's part of where we are right now. We still paint ketchup.
And we apologize for the lateness of our statements.
When you say we understand, well, you still accountable.
All accountable. All accountable. All accountable.
Please.
In line with communication, I think that there's another opportunity, looking at the process. For, for instance, I was actually on my way home. I was coming south on 75. I received two texts from people, one from my son in Nashville, that he saw this posted on social media, other from my husband. I think that in an effort to keep citizens of Evendale safe, you know, there should be communication to say, you know, there's a disturbance going on at the bridge, the exit at 75. So, if you're in that area, avoid that area at this time. Because that went on for, you know, for quite a time. And, you know, Friday, rush hour traffic, at least for the Evendale citizens, it would have been helpful that we would have heard from our administration and our safety, our police officers to stay away from that area from the village of Evendale's perspective. That would not be a good place for us to also be in.
Just as a quickie answer to that, on a completely not, this was completely non-related to that, but a number of citizens led by Sue Sproul came in and recently got the police to reactivate these, the, an emergency sort of all, all, all-platform communication where it can go out. And so, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it tonight, but just know that it's out there. It's exactly what you're talking about. We'll communicate that in the future so more people have access to it.
Right. I've talked to Susan about that, and so we haven't heard that, that next step on that.
Right.
Because that was a perfect example where if I had an, had an opportunity to see on my phone from Evendale, you know, I would have gone from Shererville rather than coming all the way down to the Evendale exit.
Yeah, that, that was a subject discussed at the town meeting in November, and Sue took ownership to head that group up, so.
Right. Yeah, I talked to her about it, but we haven't heard the next step to make sure everyone knows how to activate. That was November. This is March.
I think truthfully, we got through January. They were taking some steps. February, we were a little busy. Yes, sir?
Well, I was going to say the same thing. I want to just piggyback off of what everyone said, and I'm not really ready, so I might sound a little chatty. My name is Arthur Williams.
Okay.
And I live in Evendale. Been here, I think, 34 years. And I've been retired 17 years, but I got 33 years of federal criminal investigation background.
You're the FBI guy.
Excuse me?
You're the FBI guy.
Don't, don't say who I used to. Probably a little higher than that, but that's okay. What I want to point out, I can sit here and, I don't want to get into the Second Amendment, what people can, can do, how you can dress the whole bit. What I want to point out is that, and these, everybody said the same thing. Evendale Police Department, first job in my opinion was to just get this thing down. I've seen some of the videos, not videos, but the cams.
Body cams.
Yeah, body cams. And I commend you, of course, I want to commend Lincoln Heights Community Church, where I live. Okay?
Yep.
On what happened that morning, the involvement. After that, things got kind of screwed. But what I want to point out is, I don't know who's doing your investigation, Carolyn, but one thing I've learned in situations like this over 33 years, the best evidence you want to have when you're trying to go through the allegations is what we used to call a timeline. Now, that takes time. That might cost you some money, but you want a timeline which is going to satisfy everybody on both sides. I'm not going to say who's going to favor, who's not going to favor. But I'm saying, Evendale did a great job. Some things didn't go well, and maybe we waited a day, a night too long to get involved. I've been through that myself. But I want you to consider whoever's doing it, to ask them to do a timeline from the beginning of that original phone call that went into the hotline, I believe. Am I right, sir?
Two oh six.
Okay. Like I said, I've been retired.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've had joint investigations with the locals also.
You want to come help it? You want to come help us?
No, no, no.
Long cheers are welcome.
But that timeline will be very helpful from the time that you got the phone call until the event was over.
Okay.
I'm talking about once we got to.
That, that, that is, that is in process.
All right. Just want to make sure that some investigation, some investigation authorities don't do a timeline.
No, it's minute by minute. And Sean, if you want to speak to that, you're more than welcome to.
That's all I, that's all I like to say.
Thank you.
I'm Sean McInnes. Sean McCain, excuse me, the Assistant Chief here. We are in a timeline, not only minute by minute, but second by second. And we are in the midst of that, and he will definitely.
Okay. Do it from both views.
Absolutely.
Okay. And remember, no, as, as residents, we're going to release this to everybody. This is going to be public. Everybody's going to have a chance to go through and see all of it. So, if you just hang on for a little bit and let us get through it, we're, we're going, you're going to be inundated with information here in a little bit.
I think that would be helpful if there was some feedback along the way for what steps you've already taken and what you've got to do. Because otherwise, people just assume that nothing's happened, and we know that things aren't happening. Feedback is critical.
And last night on WWW, the body cam from the sheriff's office was released and run on public, on television from the sheriff. That's different than our body cam.
That's correct, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I, I just want to, my name is Anita Williams.
Okay.
I have no relation to Carolyn.
I know better.
My thought is that although safety and security is important to everyone, regardless of their color, and what I noticed at the onset of the February 7th experience, many people were concerned that were not residents of Evendale or Lincoln Heights. And the focus at that point was like, why are they on the bridge? What rights do they have to be on the bridge, et cetera? And it sounds as if they do have a right to do the things that they did, regardless of how harmful it may seem to us. Where are those gaps, or what are those places where we could put in place some safety nets for communities to feel safe, so that when people come in armed and masked, we won't all feel as if we're being raped of our safety and security? Because it seems as if we're looking at what we did, the reaction to what we didn't do properly. I want to look at the action that we need to do so that it may never happen again anywhere. Because it seems that we're looking for where our blame, where our faults were, and that is great. But where are those actions we can take so those openings are not present, so that we don't have to be in this situation where we're spending money and spinning our brains trying to figure out, what did we do? Where was the hole? I think the hole is in that people have the right to come and terrify others. And how can that be? Because we're all concerned.
We are, we are working with state officials.
On legislation.
On leg, to try, to try to get some additional legislation, to try to figure this, this out and try to eliminate some of these, these issues that.
That's crazy, because I told my brother that as a resident of Evendale, how is it that somehow the neo-Nazis were taken off the bridge? And I was put on there, because now everybody's saying, Evendale, Evendale, boycott Evendale, when at the whole time the center was on the people who came and disrupted the peace.
Absolutely.
I'd like to go.
The other, the other part is, we are, there is a, you pointed out very accurately, there is a huge nexus here between First Amendment rights, Second Amendment, open carry, police procedure, all these things that can make it very, very difficult for police to engage what we all agree was just hateful. We are, in addition, Carolyn will tell you, that we are actively talking to First Amendment attorneys to help us under, not, to help us understand, how does this, how does this impact what the police can do? What's legal? What's not legal? The more, there's several cities, Nashville being among them, who on the, on the backside of events that they had like this, came in and passed a series of law related, Damascus and other things, which took, which they feel like have been successful in taking away some of these avenues. We're going to explore all of that. And so, at the end of the day, we're going to try and do everything we can to make sure this never happens again.
Okay. I think we've covered it for tonight. Do you want to just file the reports, the rest of the reports?
I'm just going to mention a couple of other things.
Okay, please do.
You know, for the reports. Continuing with the, the police side, we've had some cruisers that have needed to be repaired within the last month, month, to the point where we've already expended 40% of the repair budget. So, it's unlikely that we can make it through the year with the budget as advertised, as projected for the year. Just wanted to make council aware of that. Also, that one of our officers, Caleb Kaminsky, Kaminsky, has left the, our department to move on to a, another opportunity. He left at the beginning of, you know, this month, so we wish him well. We will miss him. But wanted to let you know that that has happened, and you should expect sometime, probably around June, that May, June, July, that we will be doing hiring committee meetings to fill vacancies. Okay. Then, moving on to the fire department, I'm just going to mention that there's an ordinance on the agenda dealing with the shipping container that the fire department had used for training purposes. And going to cultural arts, I'm going to refer you to their calendar, but to let you know that the call of artists for the fine arts event has concluded, and we had over 300 entries this year. And that March 28th, the Art Venture for March is on the 28th, and Mayor Finan will be accompanying people who sign up to give a tour of the Ohio State Capitol. And, okay, so that's cultural arts. There are a couple of programs coming up this weekend, but check the website and/or a postcard that you received at home that told you about upcoming March events. Okay? And then on, as far as building, planning, and zoning, I wanted to, the report is that the planning commission approved $6.9 million interior and exterior renovation plan for the existing Queen City Sports Flex Building. The interior improvements will include the addition of a third sheet of ice with a 700-seat grandstand, bleacher addition for spectator viewing. And also, they will be expanding the existing second-floor viewing area and renovating for locker rooms. Exterior improvements include removing the current red awnings, adding a new vestibule entrance, new facade for the restaurant entrance, entrance, and painting the entire building. So, they're also going to add new concrete sidewalks, provide accessible paths, remove the existing putt-putt golf course, and resurface the entire parking lot. So, construction, construction is expected to begin in a few months. Other new activity, the former QTC building that's on Arrow Hub Boulevard, the demolition has begun on that. It's expected to be completed in April. The building department is also in the process of updating its permit tracking software so that you can get it online. It should be ready in April with enhanced web features for you to apply and be notified also. And you can notify us of code enforcement issues as well through this new system. As far as code enforcement is concerned, the building department issued five new residential code enforcement violations that included vehicles parked in the front yard and storage of items outside. And, and now, now that spring is here, I kind of question this. This is still March 18th, and we have good weather today, but this is the Cincinnati area, and you can have bad weather in two, two to three days at the outside. But everybody's grass is growing higher. So, please, we'll be looking out for high grass, trailers and boats being stored in driveways, and general maintenance issues that may not have been looked at during the, the winter months. And lastly, as far as building permit activity is concerned, in the month of January, the building department received 12 new permit applications and issued 15 permits with an estimated construction cost of $270,000 that generated $2,500 in revenue. And that's our report.
Any additions, corrections? Thank you. I have just a couple of things. Counselperson McDaniel is not here tonight, and she heads up our anniversary, 75th anniversary, we're 75 years old next year, project. But it's, she assures me that it's progressing nicely. Are you, are you on that committee? No. But it's progressing nicely, and we have great plans for, for it. I just want to bring to your attention that there was a gubernatorial wannabe debate, debate the other night, and both Republican candidates indicated that they wanted to get rid of the income tax. Folks, if they do that, Evendale will become a desert, become a desert. Other thing, the General Assembly is looking at a bill again that will infringe on our control of short-term rentals. They want to prohibit them from, they want us to prohibit them from occurring. So, we would not be able to prohibit. would not be able to prohibit B and Bs and things like that, which we basically do now. And, uh, party time, party time. Anything, yes, sir?
I just had a question, and I don't, it doesn't really fall under any of these committees, but do we know when Park Hills Construction will continue on their entrance?
James? We're waiting for better, better weather, I guess, is.
They were there today.
Were they?
I saw a bull desert.
Just haven't, haven't seen much, haven't seen much lately.
I don't know if they did much, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the next portion of the wall structure is to put in the, um, the stone veneer, and most of that has been waiting for weather, but, um, they actually had their landscaper out there starting to redo some of the areas, because they had the, uh, outbound lane actually blocked for a while today, so, um, but I, I don't have a timeline yet. I've, I've gotten emails into the different board members, and I haven't heard back yet, so.
Just curious, with, now that we're getting into some nicer weather.
Same here.
You know, and, and the stone's been sitting there a while, so I know it's been snowing, and I can't blame them for that, but just hoping to see, see a nice-looking entrance again.
I understand.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I have one other thing. I know, Mr. Anderson, you had mentioned about the safety of our own people, and I know the, um, the police department has been patrolling the neighborhoods more often than they had been, um, prior to all this issue, and I, because I've seen them even as early as four-thirty in the morning, heading to pick, pick up the mayor, so. But, yeah, it is, they have increased the patrol because of the concerns, and the so, they're, we're watching social media on a regular basis as well.
Okay. Let's, uh, begin with the agenda. The, uh, first ordinance on the agenda is ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen, and I ask permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the payment of amounts due in certain, uh, contract requiring certification of availability of funds and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
I now declare ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
I now declare ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five seventeen. I'd like to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
I now declare ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five seventeen. I'd like to read it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And ordinance amending ordinances twenty, ninety-seven dash one hundred, comma, ninety-five dash one nineteen, comma, ninety-six dash twenty-two, comma, oh one dash thirteen, comma, oh two dash sixty-six, comma, oh nine, dash twenty-two, ten dash ten, comma, fourteen dash oh two, comma, fourteen dash twenty-one, and fifteen dash thirteen, by altering the amounts of, of interest, of imp, impressed cash fund and declaring it as an emergency. It's a petty cash fund. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to?
It was easy for you to do.
Suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Congratulations.
Mr. Burke?
Third, for the third.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
And I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
And I now declare ordinance twenty-five dash seventeen adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen. I'd like to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to hire a seasonal employee in the service department and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the, adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to approve an agreement permitting the Comex shipping container currently on the former landmark property, uh, to be, uh, purchased by the village of, uh, was, that was purchased by the village of Evendale, to be donated to the city of Redding, to be used by their fire department for training and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend second and third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen adopted as an emergency.
Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen is adopted as an emergency. Twenty-five twenty, twenty-five dash twenty ordinance is next, and I need a motion to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
And ordinance approving water management and sedimentation control plans for Gorman Heritage Farm and authorizing the building commissioner to issue permit and declaring it as an, as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
I need an ordinance, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
And I declare ordinance twenty-five dash twenty adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-one. I'd like to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.